Captain in charge of Hafune Bay Police Bureau. Let me go ahead, does that sound okay? Okay, perfect. So let me go ahead and start by thanking the Honorable Mr. Rohrbach for coming to us from the, mayor Joaquin Jimenez, thank you for coming. I'd also like to thank the sheriff's staff, under Sheriff Dan Perea for coming, thank you. Acting Assistant Sheriff Matthew Fox and Chief of Staff, Dr. Victor Inj. So basically the format for tonight is going to be, I'm going to give a short presentation on the Hafune Bay Police Bureau, some of the things that we've been doing and where we're at, and then we're going to have the panel open for a question and answer period. You may notice that it's not just me because the sheriff realizes that public safety isn't just the sheriff's office, it's the community as well as our partners such as CAL FIRE, state parks, and I also have, well, I'll let everybody do their own introductions. Want to go ahead and first start with, sir?
Gary Silva, I'm the division chief in charge of operations for the San Mateo Coastside Division, so basically Hafune Bay, El Granada and Moss Beach, Montero is my jurisdiction as well as the unincorporated areas of San Mateo, so I'm in charge of operations and my battalion chief Dave Hibden and chief Sampson are over there.
Okay, and next will be the, we have two detectives that are assigned here to the coast from the sheriff's office.
Yes, Detective Matthew West, the sheriff's office, we're assigned to the coastside patrol bureau and we help facilitate in the more in-depth and thorough investigations. Detective Rick Deschler, like my partner said, we're both assigned to the coast, we've both been with the sheriff's office for about 10 years and we both worked out here on the coast on patrol as well.
My name is Micah, my title, formal title is kind of a mouthful, but state park peace officer, and then I'm in a limited-term supervising position and then parenthetical lifeguard, so I oversee the lifeguard program, the trucks you guys will see driving around within the community, so all the non-sworn lifeguards as well as the sworn lifeguards, and then assist with the ranger staff as well here in Hafune Bay.
Okay, thank you. So now I will begin with the presentation. So one of the things that I will do is I would like to go through our mission statement or value statement because why we do things is possibly more important than what we do. So this is going to be the only slide that I'm going to read because it is so important. So as stewards of our community, we envision a world where all humanity is valued and respected. We recognize our role as leaders in this effort and commit to seeking creative and effective ways to work with and listen to the needs of our residents, businesses, and stakeholders. We do this with the passion to preserve safety for all who live, visit, or work in San Mateo County. People first, service above self. Sheriff Corpus' philosophy of beyond the call speaks directly to our commitment to doing more for our communities than just responding to routine calls for service. Through this philosophy, Sheriff Corpus encourages our deputies to see every interaction and call for service as an opportunity to understand and work to address the root of the underlying issue at hand. Whether it's taking time to go the extra mile or connecting residents with organizations who can assist, we aim to build trust with our communities by going above and beyond. And to kind of summarize that, because it may seem a little bit formal, really what it is, is dealing with problems, dealing with the root cause, even though it may not be what we traditionally view as law enforcement. And we are going to talk about that a little bit in the presentation in just a moment. So first, I'd like to introduce the executive team, Sheriff Corpus, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, under Sheriff Dan Perea, who I just previously introduced, chief of staff, Dr. Victor Inj, and assistant sheriff, Matthew Fox. Here in Hafune Bay, we're actually divided into four teams. Now you'll notice here that there's two deputies assigned to Hafune Bay, the city of, one sergeant, then two deputies assigned north coast and two deputies south coast. And on night shift, teams three and four, there's also a deputy assigned to Skyline and La Honda. Now those are unincorporated areas, they're not part of the contract with Hafune Bay. However, I think it's important to recognize that they are part of the team simply in that everybody works together. That's one of the advantages of having your services provided by an organization like the sheriff's office in that we use the same systems, we go to the same training, we know each other, we work well together. So it really does end up being, as much as I hate these type of words, a synergistic effect where you get far more than it may appear. In terms of the people assigned, and again, this includes, as you'll notice, the administration for the Hafune Bay Bureau, which is myself, Anthony Toh, and Amber Curtis, along with the deputies assigned to the north coast, the deputies assigned to the south coast, and the deputies assigned to Hafune Bay. A very diverse group, varying in age from 24 to 54, we have deputies with a high school diploma, we have people with their master's degree, we have veterans of every armed service, and people that speak English, Spanish, Croatian, Tagalog, Mandarin, and Tongan. And as much as it may sound a little bit odd, I think it's a big bonus to have deputies here that is diverse as the community that we serve. So we're going to start off with some stats. This is basically what people normally think of when they think in terms of law enforcement, and I am going to mention a few things here because statistics can be a little bit misleading without a bit of interpretation. So here in the reporter bio on crime, what you're going to see is calendar years 2022, '23, and '24, year-to-date, as of a couple weeks ago. Now, one of the things that I saw in this was a huge spike in '22, so I started pulling up some of these cases, and what I found was that a number of them were late-reported. They had actually happened in 2021, 2020, and some even older. And then I realized the COVID pandemic. A lot of these things had happened and just not been reported. So I would view 2022's numbers with a bit of caution, as we're going to see in a minute, simply because they're inclusive of more than just what happened in 2022. For 2023 and '24, that's probably a better indicator, and with 2024, we are, like I said, this is taken a couple weeks ago, so it's not a complete year, but we are seeing a decline in crime, which is a trend we would like to continue. It's just going to be a question of monitoring it and seeing how it progresses as we get more meaningful statistics. And again, you'll see violent crime arrests, they do appear to decline, but what, the thing to take into consideration is less arrests, yes, but when you have less crime, you're going to have less arrests. Property crimes, we see that a lot more study across the years, and unfortunately, in violent crimes, they a lot tend to be domestic violence, they tended to be sexual assault, which are more likely to have delayed reporting. Property crimes do tend to get more immediate reporting, so we're seeing these are, there is a decline, again, a trend we would like to continue. Now again, we see the same thing, a bit of a trend in the arrests, but again, less crime means less arrests. Moving on to traffic, which is probably something that really affects most people in their daily lives. The hotspots that we're going to see are anywhere along Highway 1, especially Highway 1 by 92, and strangely, the south end by Seymour, a lot of issues down there. So the, of the tickets we write, the number one violation is unsafe speed, and I don't think anybody's shocked by that. Anybody who's driven on Highway 1 knows exactly what I'm talking about. Then DUI, and a host of other violations that we're going to see. But the takeaway for me was unsafe speed is number one, and DUIs are number two. In terms of complaints, they pretty much mimic it, actually, if you look at it. It follows Highway 1, there's a cluster around Highway 1 and 92, and we see a cluster towards the south end of town. Oh, I'm sorry, this slide got moved. So in the calls for service that we respond to, in the calendar year, year-to-date, we respond to 4,731 calls for service. The number one call type was a 911 call with an open line. It does happen, unfortunately, we had 394 of those. We had 362 welfare checks, whereas basically somebody calls because they're concerned about somebody, either because they think they may be in trouble or there may be something suspicious. And 227 audible commercial alarms. So getting back to traffic, when we're dealing with traffic problems, generally, the old saying is the three Es: education, engineering, and enforcement. Education tends to be situations like this, where we can talk to people and explain some of the concerns that we see, that we have, so people can take them into account. There's going to be a slide in a moment where I'm going to tell you that when we look at collisions, we're going to see following too closely is right up there with speed. And that's something I always tell people when I talk to them, is to watch your following distance, because that affects how quickly you can react and avoid a collision. We do it during community events, which we're going to talk about more in just a second. We have school resource officers that work with schools and with young drivers, and that's part of the mentoring and coaching that they do with the young people, and casual contacts. If I had to gauge, I would say when I just have casual conversations with people, 80% of the time, traffic comes up. And that includes both them telling me concerns that they see, which is critical, because we can't be everywhere at once, we rely on the community to give us some guidance and help us along. But it also includes me expressing my concerns about how they can make themselves safer drivers. One of the initiatives that Sheriff's Corpus has started that I think is a really good idea is the Teen Defensive Driving Program. So what this does is it takes younger, newer drivers that don't have the experience and partners them for eight hours with one of our driving instructors. They get a chance to teach them, not only teach them skills like hazard identification, hazard mitigation, collision avoidance, low-speed driving, but they're able to actually do it in a closed course, so they get to reinforce what they've learned, practice these skills, and have confidence that they can utilize these in the real world. In terms of engineering, obviously, we're not engineers, but a lot of the engineering solutions that you do see come from collision reports, citations, and reports that we make. I actually used to teach collision investigation, and that was a big part of my presentation, was how these things, the reports that we make contribute to road safety. Things that we don't even think of now, such as safety buffers on the roadside, the rumble strips to keep people awake as they go off the roadway, bots dots, this all comes from collision reports, citations, and our own observations that we report back to the state. One of the things I did want to mention really quick, and you could scan the QR code, so there's a common misconception, not all roads are city-maintained. Highway 1 and 92 are actually state highways. If there's a problem, the city actually can't make the, they can't make the fix, they have to report it to the state, and that's the same thing with us. We see something, we actually report it to the state and ask them to come out and make the repairs. So this QR code will take you to the CAL Trans's page to make those complaints, and that's going to be, like I said, anything along Highway 1 and Highway 92, including the signal phasing at Kelly and 1, which I know that a number of people have expressed frustration. I agree, I have been frustrated at that signal too, and I too have complained to CAL Trans, and hopefully they will reevaluate shortly. So the third E for enforcement really tends to be citations. Now, one of the things that a lot of people realize is we tend to give almost as many warnings as we do moving violations. So last year, we wrote over 400 moving violations, excuse me, which, this tends to be when the deputy believes that it's the best way to encourage traffic safety. Oftentimes, I know myself, I would track my own when I was working patrol, and I wrote about the same number as tickets as I did of warnings, because a lot of times, that education goes a long way. But sometimes, people need a ticket, unfortunately, for the greater good. Sorry about that. A lot of mechanical violations, over 500 of those. One of the things that people don't think of in terms of traffic is parking, and believe me, if you really want to waste some time, ask me about how parking affects traffic afterwards, and we will discuss it at length, but it does really affect traffic concerns and traffic safety. And now that we've gotten a full-time community service officer to enforce parking violations on the coast, along with a coastside community service officer who is able to assist in Hafune Bay, we've done a lot of good work in terms of trying to address the problems of Poplar Beach, a lot of the parking problems in the neighborhoods, and so on and so forth. And in terms of the collision causes, again, stop sign is number one, speeding is number two, cell phones, 50, oh, excuse me, those are violations, I was going to say, my error. These are the violations we saw, these were we giving tickets for. So, and the reason I ask you, I wanted to mention this was number one, to realize some of the things that we're seeing, but also as a takeaway, to be careful of our speed and realize, especially out here on the coast, yes, the posted speed limit may be 55, but if it's not safe to go 55, don't go 55. If it's foggy, if it's rainy, please slow it down. Stop signs, please come to a full stop, take a look, make sure there isn't somebody coming the other way, it happens all too often. Passing on right, red lights, these are all things that are safety violations that lead to collisions. And to the more non-traditional, what, I shouldn't say that, what people tend to think of non-traditional is Sheriff Corpus has really emphasized a lot of these alternative solutions that aren't what people tend to think of, but yield long-term results. So I'm not going to read this whole slide, but last fiscal year, we participated in over 25 different community events, some of the most notable being Dodgeball with a Cop, my personal favorite, Coffee with a Cop, the Sal Young Leadership Program, and the parenting classes that just started two weeks ago at the library. And on those notes, I, there's a quick video that covers a little bit of some of the things that the sheriff's office has been doing. And there are a couple things I would like to draw special attention to. One of them is CARES. This is a collaborative effort between the sheriff's office, the city of Hafune Bay, and El Centro de Libertad. What it is, is it has essentially social workers, non-uniform citizens, that can help put people in touch with the resources they need to overcome crisis, mental health issues, any number of problems. They can either respond and talk to people by themselves, they could come with us, we have frequently encountered people, we then ask for CARES to respond out, and they can help put them in touch with services because they have the time, the training, and the connections to do that. It's been a very successful program. It's been a very successful program. We've brought out, for those of you who may have met, Therapy Canine Maverick. He's adorable, yes. Which, and everybody loves an adorable dog, but the more important thing is the real purpose, aside from that, which is important, don't get me wrong, but, and I will let the detectives speak to this afterwards, the real purpose of Maverick is to help support people, especially survivors of domestic abuse and sexual violence, in the aftermath of the incident, in forensic interviews, and even in courtroom testimony. We were just, I was just speaking to Lieutenant Trickett earlier about this, and he was talking about how successful it's been in offering people support in a way that others can't. Similar to CARES, the sheriff's office psychiatric emergency response team has a licensed clinician, partnered up with sheriff's office deputies that have special training, and they do outreach and deal with people who are in crisis, whether it's mental health, substance abuse. They also deal with the unhoused population. And really, their goal is to offer people services and support to help address their problems, and hopefully, put them in a situation that realistically, you're not going to solve it right away, but hopefully, put them on the path to solving it in the future. In June, we had the anonymous fireworks buyback. We bought back over 50 pounds of explosives, and unfortunately, I've seen what happens with explosives all too often, so I'm very happy about that, and hopefully, we prevented some tragedies. We also participate in SMC Alert. You could scan the QR code. This, you can go ahead, set it up, and it'll give you alerts about things that may be going on in the county, whether it's traffic collisions, natural disasters. Basically, it provides you a way to be informed, know what's going on in your community, avoid hazards, and kind of address what may be going on. It also can contain things like safe routes and resources. Similarly, is Genesis Protect, formerly known as Zone Haven. This is a great system. This county participates, several other counties do. It is statewide, and it actually gives you real-time updates of natural disasters or other problems that emergency services are dealing with, which is really good, because you could go to your particular zone and see what's happening, and like I said, get real-time updates. And of course, the sheriff's transparency portal on the website. So you can go to the website, the transparency portal, you can get a host of information, including employee demographics, calls for service, evictions, information about complaints, internal affairs investigations, corrections, and RIPA, which is the, basically, racial profiling data. This is good, but, so you know, we are in the works of coming up with an even more robust system that has more information and even better context. So that is the end of my presentation. And why don't we start, because I had mentioned it really quick, with if there's anything the detectives would like to speak to shortly? I don't know, have you worked with Canine Therapy Maverick? Or I shouldn't say, I don't think Maverick's done it yet, but I think the others have. Ben?
Yeah. Just speak on it briefly.
Yeah, please.
All right. So in investigations, we deal with a lot of very sensitive crimes and people who've been through a lot of traumatic events. And our first canine that we had in the sheriff's office, as far as therapy goes, is Canine Ben. He's kind of been universal, and he's been distributed throughout the entire sheriff's office and San Mateo County. And these dogs and their trainers are very well-trained. We don't just give a random deputy a dog we get at PetSmart. I mean, these are dogs that are bred and groomed for these specific tasks, to provide a soothing element to a traumatic event, and they bring more joy and peace to people than you'd expect. A lot of times, we also deal with children, and children have a hard time talking to adults in general, and especially after a traumatic event. And bringing in a therapy dog and a soothing presence, just, it makes it so much easier all around. And as the captain mentioned, they can be there with the entire process. We've had them in the courtroom before, we've had them at the scenes of the traumatic events and everywhere in between, so they can be deployed at any point, and the trainers and the dogs are both very well-trained and very good at what they do. So it's a great resource that we've been very fortunate to have, and not many agencies are as lucky as we are.
Is there anything Calfire ladies would like to talk about? Okay. And anything state parks you'd like to bring up before we open up to question and answer? Okay. And, but this is the meat and bones of it. So this is why I want everybody here, so if people have questions, please let us know. And we do, why don't we have, if we want to give a microphone, and, well, thank you, sir.
Mine's a very friendly one. Talk about SMC Alert, because it is so inconsistent that it's infuriating. So how, what's the process? Is it going to get better?
I wish I had a better answer for you, but unfortunately, I don't know. I can find out. So you are right, it has been inconsistent. I've experienced that myself. I found it to be, in my personal experience, about 80 to 90%, but I've been on the phone talking to people in the EOC, and they're like, hey, we just issued this, I don't know why it's not coming through. I could look into it, but like I said, unfortunately, I don't have a better answer for you.
There are times that I get alerts for Belmont. I don't care about Belmont.
That's odd.
But I do care what's happening at 92 and 94. I do care what's happening in Bridgefield Street. I do care when 92 is shut down, both ways. And we don't miss those, not consistently. That's my experience.
Chief, may I jump in on that?
Please.
Regarding the SMC Alert, the NICS alerts are rave. They've changed a few names. So for SMC Alert, sometimes it goes into also your registration and profile setup. So if you have a chance, try to log in and just make sure that it's, just, just, the other thing is, it comes down to the signal sometimes, but then you mentioned getting an alert from Belmont. Some alerts that are set maybe from other agencies for countywide, because they feel it may have a countywide impact, there is some discretion as far as a person is sending it to, you know, weigh and measure how this may impact people throughout the county or the region. Additionally, if you're in a different part of the county, sometimes you'll receive an alert for that area, because it's also going by geolocation of any registered accounts that at that time are within that distance of a cell tower will receive said alert. But to also the chief's point, sometimes it also comes down to the reporting, the delayed report, and what I've found is oftentimes, by the time we're getting ready to put out alerts, we're either getting ready to clear the roadway, or we're in a close proximity of opening things up. We don't want to inundate or cause more concern for alarm, but I believe we understand the need for information.
Hi, Captain. My name is Stacy. I have a question around how we're taking care of our deputies and their health and well-being. I understand overtime is somewhat of a regular requirement, and I'm just curious how you think about that, how, I don't know, it's measured, like, number of hours, or what, what are the ways in which we can also be comforted to know that our deputies are cared for as well?
Well, thank you for asking that. It's, it's one of the sheriff's corpus's biggest concerns and one of the things she's really taken the lead on. She's started, we have used the Cortico app, which could put us in touch with a number of different services. We take advantage of that. We've gotten access to counselors, exercise programs, the peer support program, which is, sorry, we talk about it so often, I forget. So basically, there's a peer support program where we can talk to other deputies, other sworn law enforcement, and sometimes that's a little more comfortable than speaking to people who aren't sworn law enforcement. Even our own PERT team does debriefings after critical incidents, after a lot of situations, like I said, but there's also the cumulative stress. And that's something that the sheriff has really been really good about, trying to find different ways, because for better or for worse, as a larger agency, you know, we're made of individuals. And some people may want to take advantage of the Cortico app and practice mindfulness. Some people may want to go to one of the gyms that we have at almost every one of our facilities. They may want to take advantage of the peer support or some of the other mental health things, but it's down to the individual to what fits them.
If you can chair, you know, the amount of overtime that our deputies need to be responsible for in a month, I don't know if there's an average, or how you measure that?
Well, it's, it doesn't really break down to how much they're responsible for. Usually, what it is, is we have needs, and people generally will sign up for it, and most of it is, hey, no problem, it's voluntary. Every so often, though, we do run short, and we do have to have people come in on unplanned overtime. It does happen. But every supervisor tracks their deputies' overtime, so that they can see how much they're working and track it, because we both know, realistically, there's a cumulative effect. And I've had the conversation, especially with Dr. INJ about this, about the cumulative effect of extensive overtime. Unfortunately, for their own good, our people are great, they're dedicated, they really care about the community, and they just work a ton, because if there's a space to fill, they want to fill it. I'm sorry, did I answer your question? Under Sheriff?
Hi, Captain. I don't have a question, but I did want to add one piece to your, part of the response to your question, ma'am, and I want to say, good evening, everyone, thanks for coming out. So one of the things that's happened in regards to staffing is, it's pretty remarkable. So since Sheriff Corpus has taken office, she's hired over 125 people, reduced our vacancy rate in the sheriff's office by 11%. I'm new to the sheriff's office. I came from San Francisco, and I can tell you that over the last few years, there's a lot of competition for people in this, in our profession, and it's also a profession that people don't gravitate towards as much as they used to. So one of the reasons we've been so successful is that Sheriff Corpus committed or created a team, a recruitment team, which we didn't have before, and we went to a conference recently, women law enforcement, or women leaders in law enforcement, Willie? And there was a group of folks there that were doing a presentation, and these were law enforcement leaders from all over the state of California. And the people that were giving the presentation to a very large group were actually interacting with our recruiters, our two recruiters, or the people that lead our team, and asking them, like, you know, like, can we talk to you? We want to know how you do what you do. So 125 people, especially for an office of our size, is just nothing short of remarkable. So I just wanted to add that.
And that's a big part of it, because we bring more people on, there's going to be less overtime, and, but again, it's a double-edged sword, because people get used to it. It's kind of like the old analogy of the deep-sea fish being brought to the surface. So as these people come on board, our deputy's going to have to adjust to having more time off. There are worse problems. Sir?
Going back to the crime stats, I'm just curious, there's quite a few of aggravated assaults. Just curious, how, how does, what falls under that description? What, is that just like fights, or what is, what is an aggravated assault, in your opinion?
So, and this is one of the difficulties with aggravated assaults. Most of the other ones are very clear-cut, and I will defer to the good lieutenant, if he has better on this, but it is kind of vague. It's any assault that occurs that is involving a weapon, or involves serious likelihood or actual great bodily injury. So again, yes, I know that's, that is a little vague, and that's why it ends up being a little bit muddled, to be perfectly frank. I know the good lieutenant, you've dealt with these stats before, what's your experience on that?
Good evening, everyone. I'm currently assigned to investigations, so if you're wondering why I'm walking around in a suit, and I'm not just your microphone holder tonight. Regarding aggravated assault, it can also include domestic violence as well. What I will say regarding assaults is, in general, what we have seen is, most of our assaults are, they do unfortunately occur between known individuals. And we've seen that to be a trend throughout not only our areas, the region, really, the Bay Area.
And you actually made a really good point, that it's, it's almost like double reporting, because a number of domestic violence incidents are actually listed under aggravated assault.
Yes, sir, and that's actually, you mentioned it earlier, it's correct. We did see a fortunate uptick in several types of assault, domestic violence abuse cases after COVID, and many of them were late-reported, and it's not, again, not just the sheriff's office, it's, really, it's been a trend that unfortunately, law enforcement's seen all over.
This is more mundane, it's about the coastside trail. And there was a recent article in Nextdoor where somebody witnessed a collision where somebody was, had compound fracture, and he claimed that he went to the sheriff's office. It was a hit-and-run, that it's not possible to put a speed limit on the coastside trail, but I was hoping there could be some kind of signage. First of all, the signs just indicate it's a bicycle trail. So some bicyclists, I think, have attitude that pedestrians don't belong there. And I'm afraid to go there anymore. I have a little dog, sometimes she might want to run out a bit into the trail, and people come whizzing by. They don't call out anymore like they used to, they don't ring a bell, and if the waves are crashing, and maybe you don't hear as well as I don't, you don't hear them coming up behind you. And I, my main appeal would be to have signage, asking people to warn pedestrians if they're going to be whizzing by on their bike.
Well, it's, actually, I've had several conversations with the city about this. That is one of the things that's come up, is the possibility of enacting, because you can't, they could enact a local ordinance for a speed limit on the coastal trail. The difficult part of that is the enforcement aspect. I think, like you said, it's like we have to think of more creative solutions, because I was talking to the assistant city manager, and he was basically saying, expressing his frustration, saying, anytime you're going to have a mixed-use trail like that with pedestrians and bicyclists, there's going to be some conflict, you know? And how do we come up with a solution to address that, to minimize that conflict and make it safer for everybody? And those conversations are ongoing, and hopefully, as he had to just come up, we'll find the best solution and make an improvement. Again, I wish I had a better answer for you, but it is something we are actively working on.
Would it be possible, though, to put signs up, asking cyclists to warn people when they're going to go passing from behind?
I don't want to speak out of turn, that would really be the city's purview, in terms of signage.
Okay.
So, yeah, unfortunately, I would say, reach out to the city, and they'll be able to give you more information about what they can and can't do.
And I have a second question. It's been a really, really long time since I've had to call 911 in this community. So do the calls go now to a call center instead of to the highway patrol, where you might be on hold for half an hour?
Again, so my understanding is, so for cell phones, they've actually set up a system where it does go to a local dispatch center. I have experienced that myself years ago, where it goes to the highway patrol, and it is literally a half an hour or longer wait. But now, it should route to the closest dispatch center, no matter where you are. And with most phones now, they do have information about a home address, so even if it's just a region, they can still pull up that information.
And if you had an option between using a landline and a cellphone, is one of them preferable?
I would say whatever you have available to you. Unfortunately, like I said, most people don't have landlines anymore, they don't have breaks in service, but at the same time, they're not mobile. Whereas, if you have your cellphone, yes, you're subject to the signal, but you can move, if, to avoid a bad situation, to get out of the way, or whatever it is. But again, it comes down to whatever's the closest, whatever puts you in touch with somebody who can get you help, that's the one to use.
Okay, thank you. This is Councilmember Ruddock here. I just wanted to follow up for you. The city is developing a policy that'll talk about signage and speed limits and all that stuff, so we hope in the next few months to actually have an adopted policy. But I have a question about the incident that you mentioned, and I was told by someone who was very concerned about the woman that was, that was hit, and the gentleman escaped, but it was found out who he was.
who he was. And he mentioned to me that the sheriff's office declined to prosecute, that they, they don't prosecute hit and runs on the coastal trail. And I'm just wondering, like, I'd like some input about that. Like, why you wouldn't prosecute the person who knocked somebody down who got a compound fracture? What's the sheriff's office policy on that? And is it potentially subject to change in terms of enforcement?
So this is the case I'm thinking of. And I, I didn't want to go into it, and I can't go too far into it, because last I heard, it's still an open investigation. The woman was knocked down. There was not a compound fracture. The gentleman stopped, helped her back up. She said she was okay. And the bicyclist left. Now, getting back to the issue about what we would or wouldn't do. So, in terms of prosecuting a hit and run, this is, not to get overly technical, it could be a crime, although not a hit and run, because it doesn't meet the definition of a hit and run, but it would meet the definition of an assault. So, there's a little bit of, you know, definition issue there. But if somebody does cause injury to another, like I said, unintentionally, that's an accident. If it is intentional, or they acted with disregard, that could be a crime. And we'd have to look at the totality of the circumstance to evaluate it. If there was a crime, we'd definitely, oh, sorry, I thought the good lieutenant wanted to speak up. He had a look in his eye. We've known each other for a while. But no, definitely the sheriff's office, if there is a crime, not only do we actively seek it, but our district attorney's office is very good about prosecution. And I'm sure the detectives could speak to that at length, about how lucky we are to be in San Mateo County, where our district attorney's office is very supportive.
And also, just one more point of clarification. You mentioned prosecute by the sheriff's deputies. So our, our main role is to investigate events and the crimes. And basically, we're fact finders. Put together the facts, and then we forward to the district attorney's office for review for prosecution sometimes. Sometimes we may arrest, which may lead to prosecution. But ultimately, we are not the authority that prosecutes crimes, but support prosecution, just to help clarify a little.
Hi, my name is Monica. And first of all, unfortunately, one of my sons was a victim of a violent, you know, assault type crime. And I just wanted to mention that, to just reaffirm that I've had a great experience with both the sheriff's deputies that did all the like, response and investigation, as well as the DA. Really responsive, and I'm, you know, really appreciated in very difficult situations. So, so thank you. You guys, I've really seen a huge change over the past couple of years, in terms of the behavior of the deputies. And we've just really had an excellent experience in an unfortunate situation. But I do have a couple of questions. For the coastal trail, I was bitten by a dog once on the coastal trail. And I guess my, my question is, could there be, like, especially on busy days, more presence on the coastal trail? Because if you're bitten or something, you might have to walk a mile to get to your car, to take yourself to the ER. You know, it's, it's, it's not, you know, so just, just like, it's pretty, it can be pretty empty. And so, that's the one question is, on some of the busier days, could there be some patrolling on the coastal trail? The other one is more of a, I have a question about 92. So I do a lot of commuting. And I personally observed some of those trees to fall over when we had all those storms. And there's all the power lines that are hanging super low, that a truck could easily take out. And I didn't realize that's not a sheriff's deputy only kind of issue. But is there something being done? Because that just seems like a fire waiting to happen when those electrical lines get hit, or a tree takes them out, or whatever. So.
Yeah, usually when that happens, CHP will be the first responders, and they'll be responsible, responsible for trying to make the area as safe as possible, until Caltrans can come out and address the situation. But at the same time, keep in mind that if you see these things, you can still call our non emergency number, report it, and then we can also call it in to make sure that they're aware of it. Again, not to, sorry, I was about to make a reference, that was really going to date me. But, you know, it's better to report it twice than not report it at all.
Actually, my understanding is a state grant is coming, at the end, by the end of this year, to pay for significant eucalyptus removal along Highway 92.
In one statement on the lines, a lot of the lines that you see are the communication lines or the low lines. The power lines are a lot higher. So a lot of times, people confuse those, and they see them because they see power poles. And you see low lines, and those are usually your phone lines, your Comcast, Xfinity. And then the power lines are the really tiny ones that are a lot higher. And that's what, a lot of times, is the fire department will get a call, and they'll say, these are low hanging wires, or power lines down. And then it's usually communication lines, a lot of the time. So just be aware of that for what you see.
And again, but at the same time, I say err on the side of caution. Still avoid them, still give us a call.
Yes. I have been in the community a very long time, 50 years. And I come from a timeframe when I could go shopping to CVS, Rite Aid, Ace Hardware, and the items were not locked behind plastic bins. So when I see property crime, I will tell you, I will not be happy with any statistics until I see those cases unlocked. I'm very thankful for our district attorney, because I do think he will prosecute. And I'm very happy on TV when I see some of the San Francisco sheriffs, in other words, cracking down and making arrests. My question, and come, I'd like to hear your thoughts. Do you ever engage more with Rite Aid, which just came out of bankruptcy, and with CVS, to see whether they could unlock their cabinets, and whether there would really be some serious task forces? And I want to emphasize on this topic, the very unfortunate part of this is the young generation, the under 20 generation. They are being raised in a society where this is just part of the norm. Like, instead of being outraged over this, this is how they see life. And this is not the America that I was raised with. So you can comment on that.
Oh, no, I mean, so I'm more than happy to reach out to Rite Aid and CVS. But I know a lot of times, they're governed by corporate policy, and corporate policy tends to be regional. Unfortunately, we're close to San Francisco. And even though our district attorney does prosecute, even though we aren't seeing the level of crime that they are seeing in San Francisco, or even Santa Clara, the East Bay, that a lot of times, what it really is, is corporate policy, because they don't want to be seen as favoring one area versus another. But I would be more than happy to reach out.
Chief, if I may.
Please.
Regarding retail theft, organized retail theft, which is absolutely, again, another statewide, national wide issue. And your observations are unfortunately, they're becoming a norm all around, which many don't like. Now, just wanted to further expand on the chief's comment about our engagement with retailers. So, coming from investigations, our detectives do quite commonly meet with not only other law enforcement in the region, but also some of our business and community partners and vendors. If you ever want some light reading, look at Operation Proof of Purchase. That was led by sheriff's detectives. And it ultimately was the largest recovery of stolen retail property in the state's history. So, with the support of the sheriff, we were also able to seek and secure a grant with a board, or sorry, the state, to help lead and be better with responding to organized retail theft and investigating, and secured a pre sizable grant, a multimillion dollar grant to expand not only capability with technology, but also work more collaborative with our partners. Because what we're seeing is, these crimes, we're seeing people go through, basically walkabout, if you will. And they'll go store to store to store, area to area. And we have to work more of a higher level. Because unfortunately, right now, classifications of certain crimes, theft from stores, often are misdemeanor, which may be a ticket. And to your point, yes, we have a strong DA's office that prosecutes a majority of our crimes that we, we investigate. What we find is, if we can go at a more higher level, and try to take away the demand, that's pretty impactful. But we are employing, without going into too much detail, I hope you all would understand and appreciate, I won't go into too many investigative details. We do employ quite a bit of resources to combat it. And it is, unfortunately, it's, it does take time to build strong cases.
Patrick Johnson, I had some questions on, there was a burglary at the school, the special day class where my daughter goes to at the high school. And they went in, they used, they broke into the two rooms there. And I worked really hard for the pumpkin festival to sell beer and get tips. And that money went to them for field trips and things. And they took the laptop, they took $600, and I just gave 200 and donated back to them. Was there any leads on that? That happened just a few days ago? Because it seemed to me, from all the details that I could hear, it was like an inside job, like they had the key, they got in, and they partied in the room, and ate the ice cream, and stole the money, and took laptops.
Yeah. And unfortunately, that is kind of a fresh investigation. And especially, not only with open investigations, but especially something that fresh, we generally won't comment on the details or what leads we have, simply because that could interfere with the investigation.
Not a problem. I understand. Then the other question would be, are we doing anything because this is so fresh? Can we do some more patrolling in the high school on the weekends, since we don't know who it was? And if they still have the key, are we taking action on something like that?
Oh, absolutely. And that's something that we've done for some time. But we can increase, and we are increasing our patrols around the high school.
And then on patrolling, on the topic of patrolling, I do see a lot of patrolling downtown quite often. It looks pretty impressive. I'm very impressed. There's one of the gentlemen wearing a cowboy hat, which I think is pretty cool. But, I mean, it's, it's cool. I like it. Whoever that is, you can tell them that. But can we get more presence, like in the Castle del Mar, Frenchman's Creek, and basically like do a neighborhood kind of a thing? And just, because I've seen it every once in a while. And I'm only speaking on mine, because I can't tell what happens at the other neighborhoods. But that was in a discussion that we had, Walter, and I had that last night. A little bit more presence in the neighborhoods, just, you know, nine, 10 o'clock, kind of drive around slow. It just looks like there's people around, and police officers are there. And then, we were talking about, you know, stealing of Cadillac converters on Toyota Priuses, which is a hot market. And then there's always some new one. Are we looking for that? And kind of seeing if something looks kind of iffy on that one? I mean, that's, I know it's a weird one, but that happened to Walter, and that was, what, $3,500 that cost him to get that resolved? And that's something that does happen. It does happen quite often. But do we have, are we looking out for that kind of stuff?
Well, from a patrol perspective, absolutely. But I also think, and I would like to defer to the detectives on this, that really is something that tends to be addressed as a part of a larger, a larger investigation. Because it's one thing to catch somebody who may be lurking, or maybe in the process of trying to steal a Cadillac converter. It's another thing to look at the bigger picture, and try and take down the network that encourages this. So, do you have some thoughts on that, detectives?
Yeah. So once we get some, the investigation begins, and we get some leads to work with, it comes to the investigators, after patrol's worked on it, and kind of circle back on your other points of the high school, and the Cadillac conversion, kind of combine them. We tend to deploy the deputies in areas that are experiencing the most, most crime issues. And that's where we can get the better leads and that sort of thing, and more presence. So, once we get the statistics, we can go about it that way. And then it comes up to investigators. And we have more resources and more experience digging further into the investigations, and seeing if we can, ultimately, the goal is obviously to solve the crime. So it's, we do, we work with what we can. And we're very diligent in doing this, working very hard. So.
Yeah, just, I don't have the stats in front of me. But I've been assigned to investigations, overseeing the coast for almost three years now. As of recently, I don't recall any recent Cadillac converter thefts. I can't recall any, yeah, this year, honestly. I think, but it depends on the trend that's going on. We did see some uprising, some work truck. I've been, something that's been targeted, especially out here on the coast, are people, a lot more people are, you know, are in type of, that type of work. But as, in terms of Cadillac converters, I haven't seen any recent investigations.
Well, there was a period when wire was, copper was a big thing.
Yeah. So just, it goes in trends.
It goes in trends. Whatever's hot, is hot. But usually on the cat stuff, you'll see a trend. It'll be one, and then there'll be another one, and another one. So it starts happening. Oh, on the app. I was taking notes.
Yeah, relax. Have a seat.
So on the app, that was another thing we were talking about, is on the app, and I haven't used the app. And I'm hearing it has some glitches. I'm not sure, because I'd like to use it. Will it tell you, like, if there's a crime that happened, or something that, like, is it, is it delayed? Or what kind of stuff do you see on the app?
And help me, which app are you speaking about?
The CHP.
Or no, is there, is there an app? Because that's the question I have. I think you brought up, there's an app, but you said it was faulty, and it's, okay.
Yeah. So SMC Alert is more geared towards notifying people about emergency situations. The sheriff's office does maintain a portal where you can look at cases and arrests for, I think it'll, it does have a numerical limit, but you can set a timeframe in an area, and it will give you a very brief description of, for instance, you know, theft from a vehicle, this date, this time, this location. I don't have that handy, but I can go ahead and get that for you. And that's good for all of the county. And so you can get a better idea of what's actually going on.
Right. So you can get a pulse of what's happening, if you think something's going on.
Yeah. And that's more of a transparency, historical thing.
Right.
Than a notification for going forward.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's history, it's not current data.
Exactly.
Okay. Got it. What was the, oh, Chief Chichov, can you give me a little bit of your background?
Well, let's see. I was born in San Bruno, grew up in San Bruno, Belmont, went to Carlmont High School, joined the Marine Corps at 17. Got the opportunity to visit a lot of interesting places, and meet some interesting people. And started my career here in Half Moon Bay in 2000, when the sheriff's office took over. In 2011, I became a deputy. And since then, I've had the opportunity to work in corrections, patrol. I was on the motor, which is why you may see that traffic is a bit of a pet peeve of mine. I was also on the major accident reconstruction team. Once I promoted to sergeant, I was in charge of training as lieutenant. I was one of the administrative lieutenants in the Maple Street Correctional Facility. And now I'm assigned here as the captain for the Half Moon Bay Bureau.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer. I have a business downtown. And to you, I had a, I had an employee text
me while I was at home in El Granada, that we had a homeless gentleman come into our business, our salon. And he wouldn't leave. He sat down, asked for a haircut, and my, my girl kind of felt uncomfortable, and was like, okay, I guess I'll trim your hair. And it kind of went on. And then he ended up taking off his, it went on. So anyway, she texts me, felt uncomfortable. I said, okay, I'm going to go ahead and contact the non emergency number, which I did. And they were there pretty fast, I have to say. And they took care of this, which, while he was gone, because I contacted somebody else, and they got him out. But they came back and checked in and stuff. So I think the non emergency number actually is pretty great. You know, I think it's perfect for, you know, you don't want to call 911 sometimes. So that was great. So I just wanted to let you know that. So. And then, out of my back window, I was cleaning my bedroom, and I saw my neighbor's truck just like, take off like, and I'm like, God, I've never seen my neighbor take off like that. And then all of a sudden, I see this alert on my phone, and it's my client saying, oh my God, our truck just got taken, you know, stolen. And I was like, oh gosh. And they, you know, I responded, oh, I just saw it, blah, blah, blah. And it was the Cadillac converter. So I think it's like, neighbors need to watch out for each other, too. You can't just count on, how many sheriffs do we have in certain areas? We all have to kind of take care of each other. So, watch out for each other.
Back on the bicycles, I ride my bike on the coastal trail often. It's, it's the best thing ever. You can go from Castle del Mar to Safeway faster than driving the car. And I use the backside going to popular, there's the two bridges, when you go north or south. Just to add something, because I know we talked about this, I just want to add, we need something for, there's a, because she almost got hit. I remember, we were riding together, doing some stuff together.
Oh, yeah. I forgot about that.
It's, it's a blind, it's, it's, as you come around the trail, it goes off to the bridge, and the bridge- bridge and the bridge has got so much vegetation, you can't see who's on the bridge. I don't want to say cut the vegetation, because that's not what I'm into, but a sign-
Cut the vegetation.
A sign that says blind spot would be great on both sides of the bridge. Now, if you ride it and you ride it on a busy day, you'll see what I'm talking about because when you come around from where that area is by Frenchman's Creek, where you can rent that camping area, you come around the corner and the bridge loops around fast to this way, you can't really see who's on the bridge. So that's just the point. If you ride it, you'll see it, you'll understand it.
Sorry, I have a lot of questions. So first and foremost, I'm really glad to hear about the hiring. That's exciting. I know that Sheriff Corpus inherited an empty, a lot of vacant places, so that's really great news to hear. Thanks for sharing that. Secondly, one of the things that we've been asking for for a long time was just some consistency in staffing, that our team here on the coast would know our neighbors here on the coast, that there is an ability to build relationships. And one of the reasons for that and one of the things that might make the presentation a little bit additionally interesting, if you will, is to consider the reporting that just began. I think the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office was the last, the very last, under the wire, might even have been late in adhering to the RIPA Act and the reporting for racial profiling. And I don't hear us talking about that enough. I'd like us to have that front of mind. I don't know, I don't want to know that my neighbors are pulled over nine times more than I might be, for instance. I think as a community, we care about that and I would like to have visibility to that in, in these meetings. I'd like to hear from you on that in the future.
No, absolutely, and I'd be more than happy to. And that, that is something that I think we all can agree on is, you know, we, there's a tendency to focus on the things that make us different instead of the things that make us alike and there's far more of those. So yeah, it's, it's important, like I said in the beginning, it's one of our, our big things is everybody's shovel voice, everybody's valued.
Yeah.
And yeah, that's, that's a key component to building trust and building a partnership.
So the, the consistency of, of knowing how long our sheriffs have been, our deputies have been here on the coast is of interest as well. It was nice to see their faces. I appreciate including that in the presentation. I think it's important for us to know who they are, so thank you for that.
I've got one question and a couple of comments. One question is, early in the presentation, I think there was a slide that said something about 4,700 calls and then it broke down maybe three or four categories that represented maybe 10% of that 4,700. What, what's in the other thousand calls or so, I think, or 3,000 calls? What kinds of stuff is coming in that wouldn't be otherwise reported in one of those categories?
It's actually incredible, the amount of things that our deputies respond to. We've had everything from mountain lions in the yard to attempted homicides to asking what the weather is. And that's a call I've actually gotten. I mean, the thing is, it's such a variety, it's, it's just impossible to quantify. But if there's, there's a question, it's been asked and we've been dispatched on it.
I see. So there's a lot of stuff that really doesn't fall into a category of a crime that, such as assault or something like that, that's obvious. There's lots of other stuff you get called up on. With regards to the coverage that you showed us with a certain number of officers assigned to Half Moon Bay, the north side of the county, the south part of the coast, how, how do you manage situations like where, let's say there's a crime in Moss Beach or Miramar, somewhere on the north side of Half Moon Bay, but actually in the other, the unincorporated area of the county? Would you send officers from, that were assigned to Half Moon Bay to a, a crime that maybe you don't have an officer immediately available where the crime was reported? Would you send somebody from Half Moon Bay there to, to take a look at that or vice versa? Somebody from the county, unincorporated county, trying to cover areas of Half Moon Bay? Is there a lot of overlap that, yeah?
Nothing, when they need four vehicles.
Yeah, right, exactly, that kind of thing. But it also has a tendency potentially, the reason I ask this, I live close to Highway One, a lot of times I hear code three responses, maybe five cars going up. So it makes you wonder what happens if that's a distraction and something happens where we've just lost a bunch of officers and they go up there. It seems like there's a, a tendency to have gaps in coverage in a, in a situation where we're sort of spread out over a long distance. That's a comment, general comment?
Oh no, it's, it's actually, it's very true. And it is a concern. Unfortunately, we have to take the totality of circumstances and look at the situation. Unfortunately, it's, it's a bit of, if there's a call, we have to answer it. Now, that doesn't mean that we have to answer it right now, depending on what the call is. If it's a parking complaint, it can absolutely wait. If it's somebody with a gun, it's gonna get an immediate response. So, and we will manage that and there are multiple times where especially, and it tends to be more of the north and south coast deputies coming in to assist Half Moon Bay simply because, to put it bluntly, Half Moon Bay is a bit of a population center. There tends to be more things that happen here. You know, you work, we don't get the same amount of calls in La Honda as we do in Half Moon Bay. So that does tend to be the situation. Now, in terms of how we respond, yes, we do take that into account. We do try and maintain coverage, but again, it's on a case by case basis.
Thank you. So a couple of comments to follow, a follow-up to what Pat said earlier about two things. One, the coastal trail and people speeding on it. I do feel like we need some presence, police presence, possibly even on light motorcycle because there are times, especially weekends and holidays, where people drive recklessly, there is a conflict in the center of the trail, people aren't paying attention. I think it's, it's, in my opinion, it's getting worse. We are having larger numbers of people coming to visit and I believe we need to safely accommodate them and ourselves because somebody has already gotten hurt and others potentially could as well. And the, the other thing is speeding in the neighborhoods and running stop signs. Kehoe has turned in, in my 14 years on Kehoe, has turned into a little racetrack, both directions. People, there's more people living there that are commuting now, so there's, there's, and it, that Kehoe Highway One intersection has, is fraught with problems from the bicycle trail there that creates a blind spot for drivers trying to turn into Kehoe across Highway One traffic. Somebody's gonna get hurt there because a lot of people are unaware of the potential for a, a bad situation. But the, the problem being a lot of people ignoring the stop signs, speeding through the intersections with, without any apparent regard for being stopped or questioned. It's just, it's, it's a constant thing.
No, that's very much something I am looking at. So one of the things we've started doing is what I've seen happen in other cities, I've participated in other cities, is starting to put out our radar trailers to get an idea of the problem because that way we can tailor it because, and again, I, I don't want to go off on a tangent, but essentially what I've seen in the past is when we post the radar trailer, it can get a status. We can say, okay, we tend to see these violations at three in the afternoon. We tend to see these violations at this time, so we can have somebody there instead of trying the shotgun approach where we just send people out and say, look for something. My experience has been a target approach tends to be better and that's something we're starting to do.
And Chief, as I walk over, if you don't mind, I just want to also highlight regarding resources, not just patrol, but I do want to highlight my crew detectives. Well, you see two detectives who support the coast for sheriff's investigations. One of the benefits with the sheriff's office, it's not just the roster you saw in the presentation, the two detectives here, but just with our criminal investigations bureau, we have 19 detective positions. So when something happens, you get a lot of resources and we can have a lot of focus between our detectives, our crime analysts, our supervisors and our support staff. So just wanted to also highlight my team where I can.
Hi, my name's Paul and I hear this evening about this partnership or that the community has with the sheriffs and along those lines, and I don't know if it's a thing anymore, I didn't hear anything about a neighborhood watch programs. So if we wanted, if a neighborhood or a block wanted to organize, does the sheriffs, would they help them get something together or is that something, you know, I know with social media, Nextdoor, WhatsApp, a lot of blocks have their own little friend groups or their own little groups, but-
Friend groups?
Friend. F-R-I-E-N-D, no G. But I just wanted to, first, I guess, is Neighborhood Watch still a program? I just don't see those signs like I used to. And then is there something else that, or if a block wanted or a neighborhood wanted to participate in something that could help, the sheriffs could help them organize something?
Excuse me, it is still a thing. It's not as popular as it used to be. I, I'm sure, like you, I remember back when it was very popular and was very successful. Unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to go into that yet. I've only been here a short time, but that is on my list of things to do, simply because, like I said, you live there, you know what belongs and what doesn't belong. You know when something is suspicious and you're in a much better place to let us know. So that is something I will be following up on and I'll, I'll be more than happy to get back with you and get you that information.
Just a quick question on, seems to be an increase in tagging in the area. I'm just curious on the gangs here, is it, are they violent? Is there anything we need to be scared of type of thing? It just seems to be getting more, more common.
No, thank you for the question, if you don't mind. Regarding graffiti and gang activity in the county in this area, recently what we've been seeing is property crime trends. That being said, we are seeing that trend in the region, not just our, our county, but the region. And unfortunately, with some laws, what we're seeing is some form of manipulation by some adults of minors. And that's why it's really imperative that we do a lot of outreach using our community engagement unit, our school resource deputies, our detectives, our patrol units. We try to, again, as mentioned, go beyond the call and get out and create those relationships to help educate, but to also be proactive. We have deployed a number of resources to help deter and prevent those crimes. Some of them you see, such as increased patrol footprints, some awareness messaging and frankly, some things you don't see with detectives. We've seen various different types of gang activity throughout the area and because it's always evolving, I don't want to misspeak because while our detectives do investigate gang-related crimes throughout the county, we actually have a specific gang unit that's actually not under my purview. And because it's so complex and laws have changed, frankly, I can't speak to a certain degree that I would like to. I also don't want to provide, you know, bad info to you, but I can tell you, we do take it very seriously, any gang allegations or crimes and we investigate very thoroughly.
I think 3M we could thank for that because they've made wipes that take that stuff off super easily. There's always a technical solution.
Now we're on the topic of bridges. The bridge over by where the homeless people are living, is, how is that, is that getting under control or is there any change or any updates on that? Because it is pretty scary because I was on the planning commission when we got that trail approved and I was proud of it. And then I took my wife down there a few years later because I thought, let's walk it all the way from Kehoe to the trail. And it was pretty scary, but this goes back three years, so I'm gonna be honest with you. And dogs were coming up trying to chew my little chweenie dog that I had. My wife was scared shitless to the point where she, don't ever take me down here again. But I don't know what it's like now because I don't, I don't even want to go back there. Is there any updates on that?
Unfortunately, there are still problems with the unhoused. Like I said, we are doing our best. The PRT team has been doing their outreach, they're trying to put them in services. I know that we have weekly meetings, both with them, with other groups, and they're doing a lot of good work, but unfortunately, just, the sign of the time is that there's just a huge unhoused population. And while we help a number of people, there's unfortunately more people behind them that still need help. So yes, it is still a problem and we are working on it. That's actually one of the new trends that we are seeing with the unhoused is RVs. That's something that, excuse me, that we are working actively on. We have managed to put, in fact, this last week, we got three people into housing. They voluntarily left their RVs, we had them removed and got them into long-term housing, put them in a better situation. Unfortunately, it's just a question of, it, it takes time as we're addressing, because it's an individualized thing, we can't, you know, it might be easier to say, just tow everything, but that's not a lasting solution. So what we're doing is we're contacting each one of those occupants of those RVs, trying to get them assistance, put them into a situation that they can improve their situation, get housed, get jobs. And unfortunately, that just takes time and we are working on it. And like I said, we've made some great strides. We just have more strides we still have to make.
Hi, my name is Helene, yes, of the hurricane. And I have a question about, I frequently see CHP vehicles parked at either end of the tunnel on Devil's Slide and then also sometimes south of there past Devil's Slide. And I'm just wondering, what is their purview? How does that interface with sheriffs?
So CHP has primary jurisdiction on all state roadways and actually, since they combined with state police, also other state grounds. So in, by the tunnel, which is an unincorporated area, they have basically handle all the traffic concerns and we handle law enforcement concerns. So in other words, that's why you'll see when a car goes over the embankment there, that we'll probably do the initial response because quite frankly, we're already there, but CHP will take it over to handle the, the bulk of it because it's considered a traffic matter. Now, in a case where there's a crime, we're going to handle it start to finish because unincorporated area, the sheriff's office investigates crimes. Does that make sense? Or did I go off on a tangent? Okay.
Just as a follow-on to that, the, the area where the bunker is there, just south of the tunnel?
Oh, yeah.
There's so much parking on the side of the road and people traipsing around there and, and who's overseeing that?
That would mainly be CHP, although we can try and do what we can to address those situations and we have, we can go out, we can talk to people. A lot of times if people just see the lights on the car coming by, they'll go ahead and move out of fear of a ticket. It should be primarily CHP, but we do what we can to assist.
And one of the things you might see at the tunnel for CHP is they regulate what vehicles drive through the tunnel. So like tanker trucks or commercial vehicles aren't allowed to go through that tunnel. And so sometimes they'll might watch that just to see if that's occurring and it's a special occasion of like 92s closed where they will allow that. So sometimes they'll monitor that as well. Let's say there's something going off 92 and they know trucks need to go that way, they like to watch the tunnel and keep an eye on it.
We got here late, so forgive me if a question's been asked. A relative newcomer, just lived in Half Moon Bay, lived over three years. I just wanted to learn a little bit about Poplar Beach and how is that from a public safety standpoint? How is the parking area, but also how is the actual beach managed?
So the, the parking with Poplar is always- So the parking with Poplar is always a problem. It's a very popular beach. It has easy access. That is, if I had a nickel for every ticket we wrote, parking ticket we wrote at Poplar Beach, I would be a wealthy man. So that's a constant battle. In terms of safety, it's pretty safe. I mean, Half Moon Bay in general is quite safe. One of the things you may notice is, if you do go there after sunset, we do close the gate. Because one of the things that we have had in the past is, we found that Poplar Beach, and I'm not entirely sure why, it tends to be specifically Poplar Beach. It used to be a very popular spot for kids to go out and have bonfires and so on and so forth. But by closing that gate, we found that that really greatly cut back on that. So those closed gates, you could still walk out on the beach. It's still open. You just can't drive and park right there. That's cut down a lot of the problems. But overall, yeah, it's safe.
I'm just, yeah, I haven't seen a lot of problems. Just curious though, I guess, like, if there was a problem, like, let's say, let's say there was an assault, you know, I was on the beach and it was five o'clock at night and I saw someone get assaulted. Who has jurisdiction? Kind of what, who would I call? Who has jurisdiction down there on the sand, let's say, if something happened? I guess, I live close to there. We are experiencing bonfires a lot at night. I don't want to make too big of a deal out of it. We just shut the windows. But we'll get smoke coming, you know, a couple, a few blocks away. But I was more just concerned about, like, a serious thing. Like, if somebody was assaulted, like, who would respond? And I, yeah, that kind of thing. I'm thinking about the park rangers down at, like, Francis State Beach. And I don't know if they would drive down in a pickup truck, or, you know?
No, we'd handle, Poplar is a city beach, we'd handle that. State parks, yeah, they have Francis State Beach. I'm trying to think. What's the...
We go from Kelly North all the way up through Roosevelt, to Francis, but we'll go down to assist. If there is a problem down like that, a lot of them will be here at Francis, and then we're going to like, see them. If there is, we'll go down to assist with a large party event or a quiet, like, town.
And the sheriffs actually have been really good. We now have a Polaris, which can drive it out on the sand. It used to be, we had to rely on state parks with their ATVs or their pickups to get out on the sand. But now with the Polaris, we can actually go down ourselves, which is quite nice.
What about the Redondo Road, when you go down at the end? We use the party down there all the time.
Did you?
I was just about to say.
I'm dating myself. And they hate ladies. But I've heard, I've heard that's like a hotspot, because it was, if I'm not mistaken, there was a gate, and then now there's no gate. If that's, is that true? I can't remember if there is. But it seems like, it's a very dark, when you go down there, it's kind of like, it seems like a place to hang out. Because when I rode my bike down there, I was like, and then somebody had told me and said, yeah, it's a problem area. I'm not sure, are we patrolling that?
It is, it's a problem area. Maybe not as much as you might think, though, as one might suspect. Because yes, excuse me, at night, it's isolated, it's dark. I've contacted a number of people out there, especially with Strawberry Ranch. Now, there are, I think the gates are physically still there. However, there is some discussion, because they have gone back and forth on whether the gates are closed or they're not. That's always up for debate. The city's working on it. I don't want to speak out of turn. That's really up to them. But we have closed them in the past. And not to, sorry, to bring it back around, that we don't see, to relate to the previous question, it's not quite as popular as, say, Poplar, but we do see things out there. And I do think that if we can, I hate to say restrict access to the beach, but if we can restrict a little bit of access to the beach, yeah, that would go a long way towards eliminating those few problems we do have out there.
The only reason I'm bringing this up is because we've had a lot of families on the coast that have, you know, passed away, sorry, passed away from drinking and driving and going to the beaches. And just trying to, I'm just throwing that out. I know a lot of personal families that have lost their kids today. And I don't want to see, I don't think anybody wants to see them. So I don't want to be the bad guy here, I'm just saying, if we can keep a lot of shoplifting, then we should be safe for life.
No, I completely agree. And I mean, the thing is, the earlier that you catch it, the less painful the correction is.
And I don't think that was just a flicker of the lights, just everyone home. But just everyone knows, we are approaching eight thirty-five. Want to be mindful of everyone's time, let you all know.
I want to say thank you to the sheriff's office for offering the coast side an opportunity to meet with your senior personnel, including oftentimes the sheriff herself, who come here every quarter as part of her sheriff's care program. Anyone from the coast side can come to these meetings. They are highly informative. The sheriff's committee meets, you have a north committee, a south committee, county committee, and then the coast side. And we meet right over here at the sheriff's office. It's an evening discussion. There's always interesting information that you present. We learn something new every time. And again, you just have to sign up for it and attend these meetings. It is a font of information. And a chance to sit down with, really, you, Captain Chechov, and your senior personnel in the sheriff's office, to learn what is current, and to have a one-on-one interaction with sheriff's office personnel. I can't imagine that we have ever in the past had such a direct, personal opportunity to communicate with you. Thank you.
Oh, I was going to say, thank you. There are quarterly meetings. And I don't think we, I'm trying to think. I think we post them on the website, but I would have to check. Stop by before we leave. Let me get your information, and I'll let you know.
Hi, Paul, again. The last few weeks, I have talked to a lot of people in this town. And one of the top five things that come up is the coast hotel, the transitional housing. And I know it's a county building, right, that it's run here in the city. And a lot, there's a lot of misinformation about it. There's a lot of speculation. And I don't know how much is it the sheriff responds, the county's response, or would the city respond, how much attention is necessary there? Lately, I've seen a private security there. I think that's a great step in the right direction, from some of the things I hear from folks. But I'm just curious if there's anything that you can say, you know, or is that something that would go through, you know, the city council to bring publicly?
Well, let me, I think, I think I understand. Let me see if I can answer it, because it's pretty straightforward. So I can see why that would be. It is kind of the unknown. It is a new thing, having these, you know, sorry, I'm blanking on the word, but transitional housing, thank you. It is a new program. And they did switch management recently, exactly like you had said and observed. And my understanding, because this is before I came back out here, that they did have some problems. But my understanding is, the new management has been really good, exactly like you said. They have security guards, they're much more professional. Excuse me, they treat people a little more fairly. And people have responded well to that. We do not have many calls out there at all. They tend to deal with things themselves. And even when there are problems, it seems like either their counselors or the cares team gets out there, my apologies, and addresses things pretty effectively. So yeah, it's, it's like I said, in terms of us, it's not a heavy lift for us. But it is, I think, a promising program towards getting people back on their feet.
We'll be also having some of our staff available afterwards, if we're starting to wind down. If somebody has more individual questions, happy to take those offline for you as well, if you don't want to open, or ask them in open forum.
Thank you for taking your time.
Thanks for coming out. I appreciate it. And we'll be here. Yes, sir.
Nice job, Mark.
Yeah. Thank you, I appreciate that, sir.